Welcome everyone to the first of three Shenandoah County candidate forums. Tonight, we will be doing District One in Shenandoah County. We have with us our school board candidates, Mr. Dennis Barlow and Mr. Kevin Walker. I'd like to thank the partners that made tonight possible. They include the Farm Bureau of Shenandoah County, the Shenandoah Education Association, the Alliance for Shenandoah Valley, and the Shenandoah County Chamber of Commerce. This forum is intended to be a civil, nonpartisan discussion of the issues and respectful of all candidates. I will be asking the questions. All the questions asked this evening were submitted online by you, the voters. Partner volunteers have reviewed the questions only to ensure if they meet the required criteria. No questions were eliminated unless they did not meet the criteria. For example, they were too long or directed at only one candidate. We have received lots of questions for this evening's forum, and we will do our best to get through as many as possible. The schedule for this evening, there will be a two-minute introduction for each candidate. Then we will have a question and answer session. I will ask the questions, and each candidate will have two minutes to answer. We have timers to make sure that we stay on schedule. And the timers will hold up yellow cards when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when you have five seconds remaining. Each candidate will then have the opportunity for a rebuttal. They can ask for the opportunity and have one 30-second rebuttal per question if they'd like to clarify or elaborate more on the answer to their question. And then at the end, each candidate will have the opportunity to close for a two-minute closing statement. We flipped a coin on which candidate would go first tonight, and we will start with a two-minute introduction from Mr. Dennis Barlow.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Barlow. I lived in New Market in Quicksburg area for 25 years. Retired from JMU as an associate professor there. The reason I'm running for school board is because in getting involved this year with educational issues, I found that I was denied access that I thought I had to my school board. And I thought the transparency was lacking when I went to the school board and tried to find answers. Worse than that, I felt kind of met with disdain for actually asking questions. And this all grew out of the name change, which I was interested in. But I was more concerned with what grew out of that, which is those problems I just outlined to you. You may be wondering why an old guy like me is running for this. It has nothing to do with ambition, political wannabe, anything like that. I've gotten a lot from my country. I think I have one more mission, one more rodeo, and I feel that this is it. So I want to spend four years. I've got good, solid focus, energy, ready to pour into this, and that's what I want to do.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Walker, and like my friend here, Dennis Barlow, I live in New Market. I have been a resident of New Market for five years, and I've been in the Shenandoah Valleys for 25 years. I have two children in the schools here in Shenandoah County. And so education in Shenandoah County is unbelievably important to me. For my entire life, I have worked on educational issues, developing experiential learning opportunities for children, working with school districts to present multiple programs across multiple disciplines. And in my professional life, education is a major pillar of what I've been called to do. I think I've got the core competencies and the experience needed to do a good job for the people of Shenandoah County as a member of the school board. I'm very passionate about education because I see education as really the key to our future, as I'm sure Dennis does. I'm someone who has got not only the experience, but also a sense of visionary leadership. And I think right now, we need leaders that are going to be thinking outside the box with that type of visionary leadership. And combined with the experience and the energy that I have, I think that I would be a good choice for the people of District One.
Thank you. The first question tonight will continue with the qualifications and experience. And so you included some of this in your opening, and I'll give you the opportunity to elaborate. But then also, I'll add the qualifications that you bring that would transfer into being a great school board member. You've touched on why you're running for the school board. Also elaborate, and then also what makes you the best candidate for the voters? Mr. Barlow, please, you will go first.
I have had, I'm lucky, I've had four or three 14-year careers, so it's easy for me to divide them up. I went in the Army and spent two years prosecuting and defending courts martial, which I'm not counting that one, actually. I have only two years, not counting it. But I did get a lot of experience with persuasion, with looking at rules of evidence, with making solid conclusions, and trying to make good cases, complete cases. Then I spent 14 years as a teacher, social studies teacher in Baltimore County. I graduated from Purdue with an education degree, had 14 great years teaching social studies, history, American history, coaching, wrestling, lacrosse, and women's softball. I was called back to the colors to go back to Princeton ROTC to teach. I had three degrees at that point, so they needed somebody of that caliber to teach at Princeton. And the Army kept me on, and I had another 14-year career as a planner at the Joint Staff, culminated in Joint Staff Office of Secretary of Defense, where I was the head of the humanitarian policy section under First Colin Powell and then Secretary Perry. And then my final 14 years, I went to JMU with the experience I had in demining and pacification and led or started and founded a public policy center for landmines. And I created teams from JMU that went around the world to go to places like Vietnam and Colombia and Mozambique and Jordan and places like that to actually take care of landmine situations and create training and education programs in those countries so that the children especially, but also the adults, would know how to avoid those problems and having encountered them know what to do.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I come from a pretty common blue color background. I grew up in a single-parent family. My mother and I grew up, I grew up with my mother in Hershey, Pennsylvania. I'm originally from West Virginia and moved to Hershey when I was in elementary school. While I was there, I worked on dairy farms and in my uncle's feed mill. And I left and went to Penn State University. I went to Penn State University only after being encouraged to do that by a recruiting officer. I had enlisted in the United States Marine Corps at the age of 17. And I was preparing to go to Paris Island when my ASFAB scores came back. And this very conscientious recruiting officer encouraged me to go to college. I went to Penn State University, again, as an ROTC student, until an accident took away my opportunity to get a commission in the Marine Corps. I left college at that time and started my own tour company. And so I've been a small business owner, as well as someone that's worked for the federal government. After leaving my small business, I went to work for the National Park Service. And while in the National Park Service, I was a park ranger, probably one of the best professions there is in the United States. And as a park ranger, I got to do a very varied set of career activities. I was part of an emergency response team that was sent to the coast following Hurricane Katrina, as well as working on other things like the oil spill and that type of thing. Since then, I've been with the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield National Historic District, where I manage a large nonprofit and a national historic district on behalf of the federal government.
Thank you. Our first question or second question tonight is focused on those issues that are most important to you. So, Mr. Walker, you'll go first. Please name your top three priorities as a newly-elected Shenandoah County school board member.
The first thing is to return transparency to the operations and management of our school system. I think there's a broken trust here, and that broken trust is between the people, especially of the first district, but of the entire county and their school board. And we need to restore that trust, and we need to make sure that the people know that they're being represented and that they're being fully informed. That would be number one. Number two, I think that we really need to work hard to make sure that the curriculum that's being taught in our schools is not only appropriate for making sure that we're hitting the test marks and hitting the achievement marks that we need in our schools, but also it meets the requirements of the people of our county in accordance with their beliefs and what they want their children taught. And I think the third thing that we really need to work on is discipline and respect and accountability in our schools. Because if we work to support the teachers in that area, it will help in a lot of other areas as well. There are many other things that I'd like to work on, but that would be the top three.
Mr. Barlow?
I think the first thing we need to do is to figure out how the Board of Supervisors and the school board works together, because now they don't work together. And the thing that irks me is that they have no common way of analyzing their budget. There's no communication there. You can hear the Board of Supervisors ask the questions. The school board comes up with, not comes up with, the superintendent comes up with a set of nomenclature that the Board of Supervisors has no idea what they're talking about. There's no way that these organizations can figure out what's being funded. And more importantly, you can't trace an action or a book or a curriculum back and find out where it came from, where it was paid, and how it was authorized. This is crazy. Everywhere I've ever been where I've developed budgets and written contracts, the fiscal accountability and traces are there. They're not here. The second thing is indeed transparency. I've been to the school board meetings where they talk about the books that are now popping up all around the country and even popping up in our county. It's like, oh, we didn't know that was there. We didn't know that was there. Are you kidding? They really don't know that they're there? And when I go there, they use examples of books like "To Kill a Mockingbird" is something that they think is something that's controversial. To me, that's a classic. It's not controversial. But the, you know, the drag queens with the swinging hips and all that stuff, come on, guys, that's getting out of the way. We have to get back to the concept of democracy, where the people who elect a school board hold them accountable to them and not anybody else. And they have to work with the Board of Supervisors to be able to work that as a team.
Thank you. Our next question submitted tonight asks, "What policies or actions would you take to retain our teachers, staff, and school bus drivers, as well as to recruit new teachers, staff, and school bus drivers?" Mr. Barlow?
One of the things that has hit me when I've gone door-to-door is the teachers who I meet have the same concerns that I had when I taught school years ago. And it is that pay is important. And one of the things that Glenn Youngkin has said is that we have to give these guys and gals more pay. And I think that's true. But when you talk to them, it's much more than that. And that's what lured me out of the classroom. It wasn't pay. It was the fact that I was not able to do real teaching. I wasn't able to do creative stuff. I wasn't able to do Socratic teaching. You know, when we have the SOLs and people just teach to that, the teachers feel stymied. They feel that there's nothing creative. They feel that they're robots in being able to do that. And it's not just a sense of the curricula. It's a sense of how they're being taught or how they're allowed to teach. But it's also professionalism with which they're treated, how they're treated. It's duties that they have to perform. And I think you have to look at the whole person in these classrooms. And this goes for the staff as well. Staff need to be integrated and feel that they're one. And so pay, I think, is really important. We do have to attract teachers, high-class teachers, highly qualified teachers with higher pay. But I think we really have to pay attention to how they're treated in that school and in the community and the kind of freedom that they're given in the classroom.
Thank you.
I would hazard to say that there are very few, if any, teachers who go into that profession for the money. And so although pay is very, very important, I think the first thing we need to do is we need to make sure that we're truly empowering our teachers. And by empowering our teachers, I mean we need to make sure that we're going through the budget with a fine-tooth comb and taking as many resources as absolutely possible and pushing them into the classroom. We also need to empower the teachers by knowing that they have the support of their in-building and school board office administration. They need to have 110%, 10% support when it comes to things like discipline and accountability in their classrooms. They also need to be encouraged to think outside the box and to teach our children to think outside the box. They need to be encouraged to be creative. And we need to do what we can to enrich our teachers' teaching ability through continuing education, making sure that we're providing enough of that, and also some leadership training so that the teachers can feel like they're taking ownership of their school district. The other thing that we need to do is take teachers' opinions and get them all the way to the school board level and stop putting a firewall between the frontline educators and the school board. And we need to open up communication there and make sure that teachers know that they have a voice, that they're appreciated, and that the school board knows that they are the frontline in educating our future.
Thank you. If you would like a rebuttal, you're entitled to a 30-second rebuttal if you'd like.
Yeah, I think Kevin's concept of discipline is a really important one. And I'd like to say that when teachers don't feel that they're backed up and don't know what the rules are, they're incredibly frustrated. And these new laws that are being passed, for instance, the laws that have to do with transgender policy, there are so many questions that come up about how you do discipline in the class. Teachers don't know what to do when a fight breaks out. They don't know what to do when it looks like a threatening situation is in the room. And I've heard the school board say, "We have good people. They'll figure it out." And my answer to that is, that's what's driving the teachers out. They need to be given guidelines that they can follow and know that they're comfortable with them.
Mr. Walker, the next question asks, "How do you feel political party loyalties play in your campaign? And what are your plans to move our county forward into a better future?"
Well, school board positions traditionally in this county and across the state have been nonpartisan positions. And I think that when we look at a classroom full of kids or we look at a playground full of elementary school students, I don't see Democrats or Republicans or independents. I see the children of Shenandoah County. So when it comes to the way we manage our schools, partisanship's got no place in it. When it comes to this campaign, I've actually been very, very disappointed by how partisan the campaign's been made. I think that's been partly because of the tensions in the world that we live in today. And it's also been partly because of the political decisions of my opponent, who sought and received an endorsement by a political party, which is very uncommon in school board races. So that's the first part of the question. What was the second?
Second part of the question, "Are your plans to move the county forward into a better future?"
Well, I think the thing that we've got to do is, number one, listen to constituents. The people of this county have got to know that they have a representative government. That's going to be very important. And they've got to feel that not only in the way that their representatives are voting, but in the way that representatives are carrying the message that they want carried into government. So that's the first thing we need to do to make tomorrow better. Then the other thing we have to do is find points of agreement between all people in the county. There are things that we can all agree on when it comes to our students. We've got to find those points of agreement. Let's start working on those things first and then tackle some of the issues that might be dividing us to some degree.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
Yeah, the party loyalty thing is a tricky one this election. And I was actually glad to hear Glenn Youngkin say that the school boards were so important that he was linking it to his campaign. And his views and so forth were ideas he could only accomplish if he had the school boards with him. And so he made the decision to go out and look for school board members who would be supporting what he's doing. And that's one of the things I did. I felt there was somebody who was simpatico with what I believed, and I thought that was a really good thing. The fact that he and the party have endorsed me only happened after I was vetted, and I believe what they're doing is exactly what I want to do. If you want to look at how this has become politicized, McAuliffe said last night, "I don't think parents should be telling schools what they should teach." So if that's his idea, I'm all with Youngkin saying, "I believe parents should be in charge of their kids' education." And so to get to the second part of the question, how do we see our way into the future? I think the future is returned to democracy, where the people who vote for the school board actually have a say and can speak to the school board without being met with the four answers I always get, "Thank you, Mr. Barlow," and then I get to sit down. And so if it has gotten political this time, it's about time it did because it's about democracy, and democracy has to do with politics. I'm sorry, that's what we're stuck with in a democracy.
The next question is a budget question. Mr. Barlow will go first. "Do you support cutting the county portion of the school budget by 20% as proposed in April at the budget public hearing?"
I can't put myself back in time. I'm not sure how I would have voted. It would have been a very difficult vote. I do not like the idea of holding a budget hostage to a political point of view. On the other hand, I do feel that the school board was playing fast and loose with COVID, with having an issue come up that was unplanned, unbudgeted, and done in such a quick way, over five weeks, that people didn't have any access. So I understand those board members who felt they were trying to slow down the process in that particular instance. And again, that would have been a very difficult, I'm not lying, it would have been very difficult for me. I do not ever want to be in a position where we have the Board of Supervisors stuck ease because the school board is themselves playing politics, and that's what we had last time.
Thank you. Unlike Dennis, I don't think it's a difficult decision at all. If a government body does not have enough information to make such an important decision as the amount of funding that's going to be going to our school district, they need to table that discussion until they have the right information. When the Board of Supervisors voted on our school board budget, they did not have clear answers. They did not have detailed answers, and they never should have approved that budget until they had the clear and direct answers from their school board that they were asking for. I would not have voted for an increase in funding until I had the kind of answers that that type of decision warrants. Moving forward, I'm all for fiscal responsibility. What does that mean to me? That doesn't necessarily mean cutting school board budgets, but it definitely means going in with a fine-tooth comb and a very, very sharp pencil and looking at where that money's going so that we can make sure that all of that money is going as close to the point of the spear as possible. That money needs to get into the classrooms, and it needs to be enhancing, to the greatest extent possible, the educational experience of the students and supporting the teachers who are working with those students. So I think that, you know, budgets should always be on the table, and they should be looked at and on an item-by-item, line-item basis to the extent that is allowable. And we need to be structuring our budgets in this county so that answers are clearly and readily available to those who are making decisions and that that transparency factor comes back in. So I definitely think that there was a very clear answer back in April. I wouldn't have voted in favor of that budget until I had the answers I needed.
I'd like to remind you that at that time, the school board threw out a few lost leaders telling us if we didn't vote on that issue, we're going to lose like eight or nine million dollars. And it was disinformation or misinformation that the school board actually put out. That was pretty disappointing to me. And one of the reasons I'm running is that I never want to put the Board of Supervisors again in a position where the school board is keeping them in the dark so that they don't know how to make a decision. I think it was a terrible thing that the school board allowed to have happen.
The next question, Mr. Walker will go first. "Do you think it's important to address gender equality for students in Shenandoah County? If so, what will you do to support these students?"
So I think, number one, every student in our school system should feel welcome and safe, period, end of story. With that said, I do not know that the best expenditure for our school district in approaching the gender equality issue would be to make significant infrastructure-type changes at great expense to the people of our county, and that further separates one student from another. I think personally, boys are boys and girls are girls, and there are very large and prevalent safety concerns with our bathroom situations and within our school district. And I think that although we need to go out of our way to make sure every student feels welcome and no one's discriminated against, we also need to make sure that that pendulum's swinging in every direction and that every student feels safe and cared for.
Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I think this is an especially acute issue right now. I believe that the Constitution and the anti-bullying policies that we have are perfect as they are, and we can help every student achieve a position of safety and feeling warm and welcome within that school. And I have no idea why we need to have more rules and regulations where we're not enforcing the ones that we have in that regard already. The law that was passed is a half-page-long of eight bullets with everybody in this room would agree to. Unfortunately, Governor Northam has given us 26 pages of what he calls model policies for how this is going to be done. Those 26 pages include all kinds of crazy things like teachers won't be aware of somebody's gender identity and spill it, but they will be aware of it so that they don't use the wrong pronoun. I mean, you've got teachers that may be wondering around, wondering what pronouns they're going to use today to stay out of trouble. If you see a big hawking guy go into the bathroom after a 12-year-old girl who's in there, and you can't do anything or even ask him what his gender is, then that's a problem. And you know what the answer I got from the school board was? "We have good people. They'll figure out how to do it." And my answer is, that's another way of setting the teacher up for failure. If you're asking the teacher to take the call on this, then you're putting one more burden on him or her to be able to do that thing. The Constitution gives us and the anti-bullying policies that we have are really, really good. Let's put them in force now.
I'd like 30 seconds on that as well. You know, I couldn't agree more with my opponent's point that we're having trouble structuring our classroom behavior now and enforcing the rules that we have now. If you have a classroom in which the teacher can't even get the students to sit down and pay attention, it's going to be doubly hard now if you're putting more control and more questionable behavior into the hands of the students. Anything now that's going to take away any more authority of our teachers is just a bad policy.
The next question is in regards to the name change. Mr. Barlow will go first. "If elected, do you intend to reverse the name change of the schools at the Southern Campus? If so, how do you suggest covering the cost of changing the school names back?"
Okay. So I do believe that it was done under cover of COVID. It was done unplanned. It was done unfunded, and it was done without any regard for the people in the community. Strike four, okay? Now, that having been said, I do not think this should be the long pole in the tent for our next school board. We've got other issues that are on top of us, right in front of us. However, I don't believe anything that was done wrong should be allowed to stand without some sort of review. If there seems to be some provable way, a palpable way of figuring out what the feeling of the great majority of our community is, I would say we review it. But I would definitely say that it should not cost another taxpayer dollar or penny to change the name back. It would have to be something that would be revenue-neutral, and the money would come from the community itself. And if the community could raise the money, and if the majority of people were clearly in favor of it, I think the school board would have every obligation to change it back.
Mr. Walker?
I definitely have to take my lead if I'm elected to the school board from the people that I represent. If the people that I represent want that issue reconsidered on the school board, then I think it needs to be reconsidered. I was very early and very active in my fight against the way the school name was being changed. And I've not changed my position on it since I began working on that issue. And my position is very clear. It should be, that controversial an issue should be up to the people, and it should have been put to either a referendum or a scientific poll. If the people of the county want that name reconsidered or those names reconsidered, then the school board needs to reconsider them. If the people of the county want the school names changed back, then that should be put to a vote as well. And I would vote the way my constituents... And I would vote the way my constituents would tell me, and the best way to know that is through a referendum or a scientific poll. I would agree with my opponent, Mr. Barlow, in the fact that there are too many things that we need to be spending our money on, that there should not be a dime of public money used to change those school names. There shouldn't have been public money used to change them in the first place, and if the people of the county want the names changed, I think they should be changed, and I think that definitely has to be done with private funds, period, end of story, no public money.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Walker. What are your plans to address overcrowding in our schools and aging buildings that are reaching the end of their useful life?
So I think, I think those are, those issues are a little bit of a red herring. We don't really have an overcrowding issue throughout the entire school district. In fact, our school population is shrinking at this point. We've got just, you know, six thousand, over 6,000 schoolchildren, and that's a lot of, that's a lot of youth. But we don't, we're not facing the types of overcrowding issues that you may see other places in Virginia. Now, that's not to say that we should not be investing in our schools and we shouldn't be updating them and we need to be keeping them up to date, but our school system has been doing a relatively good job at that. There are large portions of our school budget that are for infrastructure and capital improvement, and that needs to be supported and it needs to be as robust as possible. And if there are specific things that our schools need, then we need to try some outside-the-box fundraising, basically. I come from a nonprofit background, and there's no reason why we can't be focusing more on public-private partnerships to raise some significant money for special projects. I know that there are tracks at some of our elementary schools that have been in disrepair. My question is, when we have money for things like school name change, why are those tracks in disrepair? So I think number one, we need to look at our budget line by line and make sure enough money's going to capital improvements and capital maintenance, and then we need to do public-private partnerships to try and target some additional funds for special projects, and we need to do a lot of listening to our teachers and students who are on the front lines to know what those projects need to be.
The, I think the schools as they are are quite interesting in that there's one that has eighth grade in the high school and the others don't, and that caused some people some consternation and caused some, that's one of the reasons why we looked a few years ago at a new building plan and how we would do this. And there were all kinds of ideas thrown out, like one consolidated high school and so forth, and that was jettisoned, I think with good reason. I really like the idea, I think the idea of the three campuses are really good. I really like the idea of the regionalism. I like the idea of the loyalty that one feels in those places. And if it takes a little bit of, you know, moving things around so that we can get to where there are consistent grade levels, that's fine. I think that we can pay for the things that we need within those, within those school systems and those buildings. I've been to each of them, they look like they're in pretty good shape, but I know that each of them has problems like with the air conditioning and other things like that. That always goes on. I just think we have to realize we have to pay for those things to keep those, to keep those buildings operating, and I would strongly suggest that we keep those three campuses integral or separate and so that each one has its own separate identity and feel.
Now, if I could have 30 seconds?
Yes, sir.
You know, the one, although we've got, we are really blessed with a great teacher-to-student ratio, we don't have the types of overcrowding that you may see in Northern Virginia or down on the northern neck. The one thing that we desperately need is we need to expand our vocational programs, areas of operation. You know, our technical school could be doing a lot more, they want to be doing a lot more, they're already doing tremendous things, but they're out of space. And one of the things that I've been working on in my professional life is trying to provide some of that increased space. In fact, I'm negotiating a partnership right now between the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields Foundation and Triplet to see whether or not we can provide additional space for some of their programming. For example, if we were able to move the Gov. School out of the Triplet building, that would open up more space for some of the trades and crafts. And so that's one area where I definitely think that we need to be shifting some of our focus of our capital improvement money and our capital expansion money because as we're moving further and further in the 21st century, we've got to be doing more for our children that are embracing the trades because collegiate education is not as popular and not as lucrative as it once was.
I have a question, since that question wasn't germane to the technical training, but rather than the schools, can I respond to that as well?
If you would include that in your closing remarks, if you have-
I don't want to take up my closing remarks with that, but okay, but I mean-
Yeah, we're going to stick to the, we're going to stick to the format of the two minutes, and then that was the-
So there's, so there's no other question about the technical training and vocation?
Technical training? I don't believe so.
When that, in that question, it was for all the schools. I mean, it was overcrowding in the school system.
So we're going to stick to the, to the format of the two minutes.
If I had, if I had any time left, I would be glad to yield the balance of my time to my opponent.
That would be fine, Mr. Barlow.
I think I probably have about 15 seconds left.
I'll try to do it. I think that's one of the really, really big things we have to do. The schools down in Harrisonburg are like running away with all kinds of advanced technical training that we're lagging behind. Connie Prangle's doing a great job at Triplet, but we need to upgrade that and bring it into 21st century. And so not only that, but the students who take those courses have to be given the feeling that they are, that they're worth something, that this isn't just, you know, where the kids who can't do the other things or go to college wind up. So that's just really important to me, so I just wanted to get that in as long as the topic was brought up.
Very good. The next question is in regards to weekly, weekday religious education. Mr. Barlow will go first. Would you vote in favor of released time during the school day for weekday religious education?
Probably. And let me explain. I'm not the kind that is going to make a knee-jerk decision because somebody says, okay, this sounds good or it sounds bad. I have listened to, for four months, for the proponents of WRE make their case to the school board. I think they make a cogent case. As a Christian, I would like to see those kind of morals inculcated in our children. I'll have to be, I'll have to be honest with you. Nevertheless, I know that there are strong objections, and what I've done actually is I've gone to some people I know who object to it, and I've asked them to come up with a bunch of questions. And I've taken those questions to Pastor Bowers and asked him to look over them, and he's given me answers. And so we're about, or I guess I've given him, I've produced his answers and sent them back to him. I don't know what he's going to do with them, but to me, it was 13 very good objections to what he would be doing. I talk about him because he's kind of leading the charge for those guys, and his responses to those. And he made some good sense, they made some good points. I'm looking at it because I want to make sure, because these guys have been grilled by the school board. If you've been there, you've seen that. They've really been grilled, George Bowers and his guys at WRE. And I think he's come up with some good questions. So I'm leaning toward it, especially after I've seen the answers that he's given, but I want to hear more debate before I make a final decision.
The answer for me is unequivocal. Yes, I would vote in favor of weekday religious education. I've listened to the debates, I've listened to the arguments for it, and I've listened to the arguments against it. I've also gone back and looked at the Supreme Court cases from both the 1940s and the 1950s related to weekday religious education, and after reading those opinions, both the majority and dissenting opinions, I fall on the side of the United States Supreme Court on that issue. Weekday religious education is not a violation of the separation of church and state as stated by, as stated by the United States Supreme Court, and it's something that people of this county has, have asked for in our schools. It has operated very well in Frederick County, Augusta County, Rockingham County, and it has not been a problem in any of those locations, and it's something that is, something that students can opt for, not unlike any other club. We release students to do just about anything, from agricultural programs to sports programs. There's no reason why if a child and their parents want them released for a special off-site program related to religious education, that they should not be allowed to do that. So again, I would vote unequivocally, yes.
So Kevin's absolutely right that the Supreme Court has agreed that this is a constitutional program. Good, and I'm all for it, and I hope it, I hope it flies. I just want to ask the questions about liability and the questions about what teachers do when, when students are released from their class, and, and why can't it be done some other time? And I think there are good answers to those. As I say, I'm leaning, I'm leaning forward, but I want to hear everybody come in on this before, because I, the last thing I think we want to do is, is put something out there and then find out there's a fly in the hole and we got to stop it. I think that'd be the worst thing we could do for it.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, the next question is in regards to critical race theory. That's been in the news a lot in the state. Do you believe that it is being taught in Shenandoah County, and what are your thoughts on critical race theory?
I have to believe the teachers and administrators that I've talked to, when they tell me that it's not being taught in our schools right now. We need to be ever vigilant to make sure that there is no curriculum that is being taught in our schools that divides our students at all educates our students in any, any way to tell them that one is lesser than another or one is worse than another because of the color of their skin or because of their sexual orientation or because of their creed or any other factor. I am definitely not in favor of, of any program that even smacks of that, and, and so I have to believe that it's not being taught, but we need to be ever mindful. One of the things that does concern me is in Frederick County, they said without a doubt it wasn't being taught to the students, but some parents dug in and researched and found out that it was being taught to the teachers, who in turn then were using those principles to teach the students. So it's definitely, critical race theory is definitely something that should not be a part of our education in Shenandoah County, either of the students or the teachers.
Mr. Barlow.
Yeah, critical race theory is born of secularism and of Marxism, and the people who put it forth are proselytites for, for that point of view, and it should be scuttled. However, it's not as easy to say CRT should be taken out because the bad guys know how to change names and can bring it in again under a different name. So we can't feel real good about ourselves by saying, we're going to say CRT is out, scratch it, and then they bring it in by another name. Because if they're good at anything, it's coming up with euphemistic names that fly under the radar, and then once, once they're implemented, it's too late. So we have to be vigilant, I think Kevin's word, that this is not something that is born of little flies that come in under the transom and, and lay their little eggs, and this is what they'll do. And so the problem with the way we're passing laws these days, this goes back to the, to the, to the gender issue and, and others, they're passing three paragraph laws, and then the governor and his minions are sending people in to do all kinds of things. Right now, because of the mask mandate, anything the CDC says goes. So if the CDC says wear a banana on your head, then our schools have to wear a banana on their head, our kids do. I mean, seriously. So we have to watch the kind of laws that are being passed. I believe that our school board lawyers are not doing their due diligence at looking at these things. And so once we decide, okay, we're going to scotch CRT, that's not good enough. We have to make sure that CRT in other guises, this kind of racism, this kind of judgmentalism, this kind of political indoctrination is not coming in in some other guise.
Thank you. Gentlemen, this will be our last question of the evening, and then we'll follow up with, with closing statements from each candidate. We'll start with Mr. Barlow. What do you think are the biggest challenges that are facing Shenandoah County today?
I think a lot of the things that we have just decided not to pay attention to in our school system, how many grandparents are actually raising kids and really don't have the capability of doing that because their own kids are incarcerated or otherwise incapacitated? And it's not just grandparents, I mean, it's uncles and brothers and so forth, and I don't think we've paid enough attention to that. The COVID thing indicates to me that there is a high risk of suicides. I think the school board presently constituted has not taken a good look at that, and I think we need to do something more about identifying that. After two and a half years of COVID, the things that our kids are facing in terms of, you know, latent bullying and, and things that are, they've turned inward to social media and things like that are things that we're, we outside, not wearing masks and not in that school and not having to deal with that are unaware of. And so I think many of the issues facing, I haven't even talked about drug overdoses, and that's, and that's getting, getting to be epidemic as well. So the problems that we see in our community around us are actually embryonic in our schools. And when I go to the school board meetings, and I've stayed to the end of all of the business meetings, I don't see anybody in the school board saying, let's get down to this. I mean, they get briefings about who's gone to the latest state fair and who's, who's won this ribbon, and they pat each other on the back, but they don't want to, they don't want to dig into these issues. And these issues that are facing the county are, as I say, they're actually rising and becoming even more scary in, in our school system, and they have to be addressed there.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
If you're going to ask for a short answer for three, I would have to try and sum them up by saying, issues related to poverty, issues related to social welfare, especially as it pertains to, to youth, and then issues related to unity in our community. We are not going to be effective as a people if we do not find ways to work together. I'm a conservative, but just because I'm a conservative does not mean that I can't work with somebody who is my polar opposite. So we've got to find points of unity. Again, I mentioned earlier, we've got to start working on the things that we know we can work on together and use those relationships to springboard to even more complicated relationships. So unity issues, we've got, we've got to solve that. We have got to meet our children and the people of this county where they are, and almost 50% of our county is, is living either at the poverty line or below it, or they're having to make hard decisions between whether they're going to pay their car payment or their electric bill. Those households are raising children who have stresses that are affecting not only their education, but the future of our county. So we need to be really focused on meeting those youth, those at-risk youth, you know, where, where they are, and, and doing what we can to support those families as well. And, and I mentioned the social issues. We've got a lot of social issues in our country right now. We have got to find ways to make sure that everybody knows that they are valued, that they're important, that their opinion means something, whether I agree with it or not, and we need to make sure that children are safe and that we're doing what we can in this day and age to support the parents in raising their children. Unfortunately, schools and households and families are totally different in many ways in many households than they were when we were all growing up, and so we need to find ways to support our children in a social welfare way as well.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think Kevin brought up a really, really good point with, with the concept of poverty, and it brings to mind to me the concept of taxes. I've been accused during this campaign, it's, my family's just crazy about this one, of being a closet liberal, and believe it or not, I've heard that. So because I'm in favor of raising taxes on people like me who've done well and can afford to pay more for our education for our kids, but the kids who fall below the poverty level that Kevin just alluded to, they can't afford that. We need some sort of structure that allows people like, those people who are really sucking it up not to pay and people like me to pay a little bit more.
Thank you, gentlemen. To close, each candidate will have two minutes of a closing statement. We will begin with Mr. Walker.
I have children in these schools. These schools and the type of education that we have in this county, it's not an academic question in the Walker house. It's an ever-present, everyday issue and concern. My children's future is very important to me, but all of the children in this county should be important to all of the residents of this county because they are the future of this county. I'm running for school board because I feel that I have the core competencies and skills needed to do a good job on behalf of the people that I would be representing. I come from a very varied background. I've not been a lifelong bureaucrat. I've been a small business owner. I've worked in government. I've also worked in the nonprofit sector. I've shoveled coal belt lines and loaded barges on the Ohio River. I've fawned- I've farmed. I can relate to many of these students, having come from a single-parent family. I know what it's like to stand in line and get a free and reduced lunch. I have the background that will make me understand where some of the people in our county are coming from, and I've got the skills and experience needed to help them. I see my running for school board as a way that I can serve the people of this county. I'm a conservative. I am respectful, I'm energetic, I know how to listen, I believe in representative government. And I also have an outside-the-box visionary approach to leadership and to how we need to move our schools, our children, our community into the future. I would be honored to be the next school board representative for District One in Shenandoah County.
I don't have any kids in school. I did have a lot of kids, four kids, in public schools, and I taught in public school. I don't think you necessarily have to have a child in school to be concerned about your schools and know about your schools. I've been a coach where my daughter's on the team, and I've been a coach when I didn't have any kids on the team. And sometimes I was a better coach when I didn't have a kid on the team. And so I think it's really great that, that people have skin in the game. But I also think it's important that those of us who don't have kids still have skin in the game because it's our country, and we, we love our legacy and what happens to it. So, so we both have perspectives I think are valid here. I do think that my experience in life at putting together plans in other countries where I had to bring people together, like the UN and NGOs, I've actually sat across the table from Hamas and Hezbollah and where I've actually been a target, I haven't been a bureaucrat, I've been a target of grenade attacks, knife attacks in places like Bogota and Amman, Jordan, and I've, I've spent my time in 34 of these countries overseeing these policies. But when, when it gets down to it, the thing that I've been most successful at doing is taking people, different opinions, different personalities, different worldviews, and trying to come up with something we can agree with. And I'd like to think that the school board can take as its mantra a concept of democracy, the concept of everybody working together and for the, for the common good, and kind of get rid of some of the unity, this unity we've talked about here. I think that's possible. I mean, I know the people up there are good people, but I also think they've been snookered by some of their lawyers and by some of the social backing that they have. But I, I think we can bring us all together and have what I think are cogent, good policies for our county.
Thank you. In closing tonight, I'd like to thank again the partners that made tonight possible, the Farm Bureau of Shenandoah County, Shenandoah County Education Association, the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley, and the Shenandoah County Chamber of Commerce. A special thanks to everyone who helped out this evening. Special thank you to the candidates for participating, to everyone who submitted a question, and to Hank Zimmerman with Shenandoah Valley Productions for the video support. Thank you for watching our District One School Board Candidate Forum, and a reminder to folks to vote on November the 2nd. Thank you.